I'd like to call the Gurnee Village Board, regular meeting of August 8th, 2016, to order. Roll call, please, Donna.
Wilson.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Ballmas.
Present.
Hood.
Here.
All ayes, one absent.
All right, trustee Garner let us know he'd be unable to make it tonight. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. [applause] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. It's nice to have a full house, and we have a full agenda. First up is public comment. If you'd like to address the board on a matter that's not on the agenda, you can come to the microphone and state your name. And if not, you'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. So I will move on to approval of the consent agenda as presented. Motion by trustee Ballmas. Second by trustee Hood. Roll call, please, Donna.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
All ayes, one absent.
All right, motion carries. Patrick, please read the consent agenda into the record.
Ad number one, approval of the minutes on the July 25th, 2016 Village Board meeting. Ad number two, approval of ordinance 2016-50, authorizing the execution of an automatic fire-rescue mutual aid agreement, Quad One North. Ad number three, approval of authorizing fire chief to issue a fireworks permit for Chicago Bears' practice event on August 20th, 2016, at Warren Township High School, Upland Campus. Ad number four, approval of payroll for period ending July 23rd, 2016, in the amount of $788,059. Ad number five, approval of payroll transfer journal for period ending July 23rd, 2016, in the amount of $781,021.48. Ad number six, approval of bills for period ending August 8th, 2016, in the amount of
Thank you, Patrick. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as right into the record? Motion by trustee Ballmas.
Second.
Second by trustee Ross. Roll call, please, Donna.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner. Oh, I'm sorry, absent. Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
All ayes, one absent.
All right. Motion carries. We'll move on to petitions and communications. First up is approval of the proclamation honoring this year's 2016 Gurnee Days honorary, Mr. Don Henderson. I'll read the proclamation into the record. "The Village Gurnee wishes to recognize one of its most caring, giving, and compassionate citizens, Donald Henderson. And Don, a longtime Gurnee resident, is the consummate good Samaritan who has donated to countless organizations in the community. And Don established the Henderson Foundation as a continuing source of support to meet the needs and serve the interests of his Gurnee community. The Foundation provides annual nursing scholarships at the College of Lake County and Rush University, as well as supports many local, public, and private community-based organizations. And Don recently has helped create the Gurnee Teacher of the Year program in the, in all the area schools to recognize the importance of supporting good teachers. And Don has selflessly donated to the Gurnee Fire and Police Departments over the years, providing the funds for life safety devices, training equipment, public education programs, and much more. And Don and the Henderson family have been an integral part of the Gurnee community and our history. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Gurnee that Thursday, August 11th, 2016, be proclaimed as Don Henderson Day throughout the Village of Gurnee. Be it further proclaimed that the Village congratulates Mr. Henderson for being selected as the 2016 Gurnee Days honorary, and even further proclaimed that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Don Henderson at a dinner in his honor on Thursday, August 11th, 2016." Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Ross. Second by trustee Thorstensen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes, and I will be delighted to read this on the record at Thursday's dinner, and hopefully the rest of you will join me. Next up is a presentation of a plaque to, we're very proud of, our Eagle Scout, Justin Gis, and he's going to join me down front. All right, the Village likes to recognize in person our Eagle Scouts because it's quite an accomplishment. It took a lot to get here, a lot of hard work, many years, and I know you had to do a project in order to achieve the rank, so for the audience and for cable, tell everybody what your project was.
For my project, I constructed two sensory tables and a chalkboard for Warren Special Recreation Association. So the two tables, they had removable tabletops, and they're revealed bins, and the bins could be filled with sand or water, or different things for activities for the camp participants.
Oh, that's very worthwhile. That's nice, and it's different, too. I like that. You had some families help along the way?
Yeah.
Introduce them.
My brother, Jason, my dad, John, my grandma, Angie, and my mom, Claudette.
All right, and it looks like you have a fan club behind them, too. Is that your troop?
Yeah, those are people from my troop. My troop leader is Doug Lindsey, and assistant scoutmaster, Kevin, or, sorry, John Wilkins.
I do that all the time. Good, well, thank you. You must be very proud of this. So in order, we're recognizing in honor of obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout, we have a plaque for you for tonight, and we'll be expecting big things from you as you go on and continue in all your endeavors, so now we get to do the pictures. All right, well, thank you for joining us. This is indicative of very big things in your life. Eagle Scouts go on to accomplish a lot of things, so thank you. Thank you all for being here. Any other petitions and communications?
Yeah, just one heads up. So, ALI's been working with ULI to get the report meeting set up, so we're looking at August 23rd, which is a Tuesday, at 6:00 PM up at Spalding School. So if that works for everybody's schedule, we will have that serve as our committee of the whole for August. We'll cancel the meeting on August 29th, so we'll have back-to-back Village Board meeting on August 22nd, then we'll be up at Spalding School, 6 o'clock on August 23rd.
Then we get the next Monday off.
Yes, and then you get a Monday off, so.
All right, and it'll be up at Spalding.
Yeah, the multipurpose room up at Spalding. So if that doesn't work for somebody, let us know quick, because at this moment, ULI is planning on that, so.
All right, so we'll move on. No reports?
Correct.
No old business?
Correct.
Move on to new business. First item is approval of ordinance 2016?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one. Adding one Class VII liquor license by amending section 6-56 of Article II of Chapter VI of the Gurnee Municipal Code entitled "Alcoholic Beverages" as last amended by ordinance number 2016-37 passed June 6th, 2016. This is from Maude. Superfast Pizza at 6447 Grand Avenue, and the petitioner's here. If anyone has any questions?
Yeah, so Maude is looking to move into the multi-tenant building, or getting close to opening, actually, where Applebee's was. Eight locations in Illinois that do individual artisan-style pizzas and salads, get those cooked and ready in less than three minutes. So they applied for Class VII, which is the sale of beer and wine for consumption on premise only. Police department did the necessary background checks, and everything came back fine, so now it is ready for your consideration.
Lot of buzz on this one. People already talking. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Wilson.
Second.
Second by trustee Ballmas. Roll call, please, Donna.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Five ayes, one absent.
All right, motion carries. Congratulations. Welcome to the Village, and we'll be excited. Hopefully, you're going to do a ribbon cutting.
Could I actually speak on that?
Yes, please do.
It's going to be on the 19th at 12 noon, and our marketing department is very, very busy, but I'd like to reach out if anybody from the Village would like to come to the ribbon cutting and actually help slam the scissors. That'd be great. Can I present my?
I'm an expert at that.
Okay.
After 12 years.
Can I present my business card, then?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
And what's the date again?
The 19th.
Okay.
And it'll be at high noon. First 52 in line, get free pizzas, and it's a lot of fun. Thank you.
All right, welcome, welcome. I will be there right, Donna.[627.04][627.04][laughing] All right, bye-bye. All right, item number two, approval of ordinance 2016-52 granting a variation pursuant to the Gurnee zoning ordinance for 1735 Bell Plain Avenue, and we do have the petitioner here, so Patrick?
Yeah, I'll walk you through this, and then as a matter of fact, the petitioner's here, if there's any questions of him, and David from Community Development. So, petitioner, 1735, is looking to install a six-foot-tall solid wood fence and a swimming pool in the corner side yard setback at his property up on Bell Plain and Magnolia. Bell Plain serves as a front yard, Magnolia serves as a corner side yard. Per the zoning ordinance, fences are restricted in the front and corner side yards to height of three feet if they're solid, and four feet if they're open, and then pools are not allowed in the front corner or interior side yard setbacks. He was in front of the planning and zoning board on May 18th. The fence, the petitioner stated, is a replacement of a current fence that was there. There are some areas of the fence that are taller than six feet. He kept the top of the fence even across there, so there were some panels added at the bottom, so with the topography of the land, there are some sections that are a little bit higher. When measured from the ground, as I stated, the petitioner says replaces a previously existing fence of the same style and height that was there. Purpose for the fence, obviously, is to provide privacy and security related to above-ground pool that was behind there. The pool and the fence, from what we can tell, were both there prior to the property being annexed into the Village, so it was a legal nonconforming, but any new structure is supposed to be brought into conformance, so that's why the petitioner's here tonight looking for that variance. The couple items that were brought up and discussed at the planning and zoning board as far as location of the pool, and why it has to be in the corner side yard because there is adequate, or there is some space to the east on the petitioner's property, he's got a septic field back there, they didn't want to place the pool on top of, and there's also some large trees back in that area that if the pool was to be placed back there, he stated would have to be removed. Planning and zoning board are forwarding a unanimous unfavorable recommendation on the request. They felt that there was nothing unique about the situation, that it was a large enough lot, that there were opportunities on there in other locations to place the pool that wouldn't interfere with the septic, and didn't feel that the removal of the trees constituted a hardship. So, as I said, the petitioner is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. From his perspective, and David's our resident zoning expert, so.
David, anything you want to add about the history or?
Nope, that's pretty much.
All right. Part of the hardship, we did look at bringing sewage up to the property, and it's, it would be almost $20,000 to connect to the Village's sanitary system, which is why he's still on septic, so that's part of the hardship.
Yeah, it is, there is public sanitary sewer available to the site as of now connection fees, and hookup fees would come to about that total.
Okay, questions from the trustees? And we do have the petitioner here, if you want to hear from him. Trustee Wilson?
Was the pool there before it was annexed?
As best as we can tell, yes, it was.
Sir, if you're, yeah, if you're going to talk, I need you on the microphone so we pick it up on it.
Sure.
So just go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay, my name is Marius Saltero. I live at 1735 Bell Plain, and the answer to your question is yes, and so was the fence.
What was, what was changed or built on the property that is inconsistent with our ordinances?
Well, according to your ordinance, which I didn't find out till later, you know, because when I called the lady who answered the phone, she just said if you're just replacing the fence and it's the same height, go ahead and go for it. So I, I did the fence. Of course, the pool went down when we had a big storm, and, you know, I was procrastinating on it, and it wasn't until now that I had retired and had a few more bucks that I wanted to do more exercise, go walk, come back, take a swim, you know, in the pool. So that was one of the things that, you know, I would like to do. As you can see, I'm a little heavyset, so.
You're preaching to the choir, sir.
Yeah.
Was there anything that?
You can come over.
Was there anything that you did outside of our ordinances without taking, without getting a permit?
Uh, yes. Yeah, I, since I got the okay from the lady that said okay, I thought, okay, well, I'm just going to go ahead and do the fence, make the fence, and I didn't get a permit, which, you know, that's my bad.
The only work you've done, though, was the fence. You didn't do any of the other work on the property, it was just the fence. Your question was, did he do any other work?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, no.
Yeah, that's, I think there's other work that's been done on the property, but prior to your own ownership? When did you purchase the property, Mr. Saltero?
Well, it was a deck, but I did get a permit for that. It was a deck in the back, and that, I made, I was going to put a screening porch, but I thought that was a little flimsy, so I, I did go ahead and put the, you know, put like a little office back there instead, you know, on top of the deck, but I made sure the foundation was, was good. They did not want me to put a bathtub in there. Don't know why, but it was just going to be a bathtub in there.
I understand the, the concept of what you're doing. Is there anything that's changed as far as, like, the fence on the side to the, to the east is at one height, and then in the front, it's taller, and that, was there anything?
Is it taller in the front? I mean, I drove up there today and took a look at it, and I just noticed the fence on the south side.
David, is it all the same size now?
David, do you have an aerial you can put up on the screen for the rest of the board members?
I understand what you're, what you're getting at, and what I did, following the level of the dirt, starting with the house, I leveled it all the way across instead of going down with it. I did hear that you could get away with six, six inches, I think, adding on to the eight. Is that correct? Yes, no? They allow you six inches besides the eight?
We typically will allow, you know, some small variances within, with the height of the fence based upon irregular ground surfaces, so typically around six inches will, we will grant without any kind of exclusion.
Okay, so that's all, that's about the extent of it that I did do. Other than that, the fence on the, on the south side is, you know, practically the same size that it was there. It was an eight-foot there, you know? So I'm just trying to beautify the Gurnee Village, because it was, it was a really bad fence. And of course, you know, putting in the swimming pool, which was there already, I thought could be grandfathered in without any problem. They do, and I did give pictures last time I was here, and I, I believe you guys have the pictures, and so there is some pictures that, and.
Any other questions?
I do have pictures of other fences that been around the area that are pretty close to Grand Avenue and Milwaukee that, I'm, I'm just asking.
That are on corner lots?
Huh?
That are on corner lots that didn't receive a variance?
Yes, is a corner lots, and they're real, it's like, I don't think they're more than five feet. I got a picture of them here, that on, right, right on Grand and close to Milwaukee that I have here, that.
And if you recall, the Village's fence ordinance, we do allow up to an eight-foot-tall residential fence when you abut one of our major highways in town.
Oh, that's right.
So we do allow higher than even the six-foot maximum for residential when you do abut one of the major thoroughfares.
Yeah, I know which house you're talking about, 21 there.
And this is, in the area where I'm at, you know, there is a lot of fences, and I thought, I wasn't harming anybody. In fact, I asked all my neighbors, and they kind of liked what I'm doing, because on the rest of the, my, on the rest of the fence, I was going to put picket in the back, which I already showed Tracy what I was going to do, and get in a permit, and, and after, you know, after they called me on that, you know, I came, I did come in and get a permit on it, so.
All right, let me see, did, other trustee, trustee Hood?
Generally, just, I'd like to follow what the planning and zoning board decided, so they decided against, it was unanimous against, and their citing was, they didn't find a unique circumstance that the hardship was created by not obtaining a permit. I guess the only part I struggle with is if he says he called into the Village and they said, "Go ahead and do it," but beyond that, I don't disagree with the findings of the planning and zoning board, so I guess I'd like to ask, just, David, is there something in their findings that you need to draw my attention to that maybe you found out since that meeting that I should know about?
Not really. You know, the Village is, I'll elaborate on the Village's policy for fence replacements. If you do any structural repairs, posts, and things like that, we do require a permit. We do allow for replacement of panels of fences up to, I think, 50% without a permit. If you are going to be doing more than a 50% requirement, if it's a nonconforming fence, we do require it to be brought into conformance. So I'm not sure who he talked to, but my staff is pretty well dialed in on those requirements. The aerial photos, we've looked back, you know, through the history of the aerial photos on this site, we can see evidence of the pool there, you know, 10 years ago and greater. It's kind of hard to tell from some of the grainier aerial photos, but it appears that around 10 years ago is when the, the pool ceased to exist. The fence was around the pool at that time, and I understand Mr. Saltero's request to, you know, create a privacy barrier around the fence, or around the pool, and we would require some type of a protective barrier around that pool as well. However, our issue is the location of the pool on the site. If you look at the, you know, and the reason why we have a prohibition of swimming pools and corner side yards is if you look at the site, the property adjacent to it, so over here to the, the east of it, you know, and in this case, it's not quite as pronounced, but the next-door neighbor would have a pool in the adjacent front yard of their home. So we try to keep the pools tucked behind the homes so that they're not in the front yard. This one's going to be along the street and would be actually adjacent to the neighbor's front yard, which is why we have that prohibition for corner side yards for swimming pools.
Thanks, David. I guess I'd, for, from my perspective, it would be as if he would have applied for a permit, he would have found those things out, and then to say now that it's okay to do, and it seems like the rules make sense to me, that, I guess I would agree, I'd want to back the planning and zoning board unless I had a really good reason not to. Thanks.
Brian's going to read, just, not everybody's been through the variances before, the exact purposes for, when the Village can, is within reason to give one, to give a variance.
Just by way of background, what is shown on the aerial is the side lot is, there's a 25-foot setback, and you can see just immediately south of where the number 1735 is, that's where the existing pool was, and so our ordinance says on these corner lots, you have to have a 25-foot setback. The only way to get relief from that, that is a village-wide requirement, is that you petition for a variance. And essentially, a variance is not to change the provision. Everybody still agrees that it's good to have these corner lots, to have open air, prevent fire hazards, and, and as David said, but actually, under our new zoning ordinance, and maybe this is the first one that I can think of that we've had a variance request, these are the approval standards that the petitioner has to attempt to meet. One, the strict application of the terms of this ordinance, and that again is the 25-foot setback in the fence height, will result in undue hardship unless a specific relief requested is granted. Two, the alleged hardship of the owner is due to unique circumstances inherent to the subject property and has not been created by the owner. Three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character nor be detrimental to the public welfare of the locality. And four, the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property impose a particular hardship upon the owner as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. So those are the standards. There is limited relief if a, if a property owner can establish that a combination of those circumstances exists. This board is the ultimate board that decides that issue, and each member gets to decide that issue based on the reports and evidence presented to them.
Thank you, Brian. Trustee Thorstensen?
I understand that you, your deck is built, or was built to?
Yes.
As a circumference to?
It still is. It's still there. That I need to knock down.
So is it circular?
The deck, it's circular, and not only that, but the foundation to the pool that was there is still there. So if I was to move the pool, I mean, I would have to dig a hole, put the gravel, put the sand, and all the foundation that, that's there. So not only that, but that's, that's going to, I mean, the pool itself is around $3,000, okay? And just the foundation and to, and to fix that deck that's already there, that's going to cost me another $1,000 probably, but to build a new one around the fence that it is going to have, I mean, that's, that's going to cost a lot, you know, it's, it's one of the things that I thought they were going to grandfather me in because of the foundation was, is still there, and, and also the deck, so, and, you know, it's just, how much, how much did you say, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with, with what I have, but how much did you say was going to be the, if I did change the, the water and all that, how much was that going to be?
I believe, I believe it was around $10,000 for sanitary sewer to get it to your house, and about another $10,000. Around another $10,000 for a water hookup.
Yeah, okay, and that's not even paying the plumber?
No.
Which charge an arm and a leg, so that, that's going to be another probably $15,000.
That, that, that does include a rough estimate for the plumber to hook up the lines.
Because I did ask, I mean, before it was, before it was almost that high, I mean, you know, it was like $7,000 before, now, now, that'll probably be like 10 to 15, because they do charge a lot, so that is pretty, you know, that's, that's hardship, instead of just leaving the pool where it is now, and, because it doesn't bother anybody. And if you're talking about 25 feet from, is that the edge of, of the street? Is that what you were talking about?
From the right-of-way line.
Okay, so if you, if you really measure from there, that's already like- Okay, so if you, if you really measure from there, that's already like 15 feet from the edge of the street to the fence line. And that's another five feet, actually with a circle of the, of the pool is.
Yeah, your home is set off about 30 feet off of the east-west street, right-of-way, so it would...
No, it's 32 feet from the edge of my house to the fence. And then, and then another 15 feet, another 15, I think it's 15, 17 feet from the fence to the, to the edge of the street.
Understood.
Okay, and that's 40 feet from the front of the fence line, 45 feet to the edge of the front, of the front of the house. It's almost a half, half a football long.
You know, this is difficult when we annex property. When it was unincorporated, obviously, the pool could go anywhere it wanted, the deck, all of that, there was no setbacks. Once we annex, everything's grandfathered, and it's grandfathered until you need to replace it. Although to the average purchaser of a home, you buy it, there's a pool there, you assume, and I know you're not supposed to assume, but most homeowners do. You assume because the pool's there, it's okay. And it's unfortunate that, I think you would move it, it would be moved, no issue, if it wasn't for the septic field. There really is no other place in the yard. And it's, it does create a burden to tell someone to put a pool in. You've gotta hook up to the water and the sewage, that's a lot of money. Now, obviously, if the septic field fails, Mr. Saltero will have to hook up to our sanitary system. And at that time, it makes sense to do waters. So we have a few of these still on the northeast side from when these properties were annexed and things were allowed or built, and now when they need to be replaced. Do we follow our ordinances and change the neighborhood? Or do we allow what was originally grandfathered? It's a tough decision either way.
May I say something, Christine? Hold on one second. You know, when the septic guy comes in, he inspects the inside of that. And if it's, if it's ready to, you know, to repair or something like that, if repairs need to be done, deterioration of the wall is so thick in that septic that I always tell him to check that, which is every, every three years, they come and clean that off. And they thoroughly, you know, they can't wash it all because they gotta leave some on the bottom. And, but they do inspect it, they go inside, they put masks on, they inspect it with flashlights, inspect the piping. And if, you're saying if the septic goes bad, hopefully it doesn't.
No, hopefully it doesn't, but if it, any, any septic fields up in the northeast, when they fail, you can't get a permit for a new septic field. You will have to hook up to the sanitary system. I'm not, I'm not indicating it's gonna fail, but when it does, that's why we have sanitary up there.
And to tell you the truth, I check the water like almost every year and that water's, I mean, I've heard so many stories about lead in the water or the cities or whatever, and it's, it's like, okay, I'm glad I got my well water and it's nice.
You can pull our water quality report, we don't have a lead issue. But at some point, your well could become contaminated or go dry. And again, we have water up in that area for that purpose.
Yeah, I, I understand.
May not happen in your lifetime. But if it wasn't for the septic field, you would move the pool. That's kind of what's caused, why it was probably put in the side yard in the first place when it was unincorporated. Question, trustee Thorntonson?
This is for staff. So if the petitioner pulled a permit to replace the fence and had it at the correct height, then would you have permitted the, or allowed the pool as is?
We could not have issued a permit for a replacement pool because the pool has been gone for about 10 years. So we, you know, and it was more than a repair, you know, it's been gone. We can see that through our aerial photo history. The fence, if he had requested a permit to replace no structural portions of the fence, so leaving all the posts intact and less than 50% of the panels of the fence, we would have allowed him to do that without a permit. At the point that he replaced more than 50% of the panels of the fence or that he replaced any of the posts of the fence, at that point, he would have had to bring it down into a conforming height in that area, in that side yard, corner side yard area.
So are we requiring him to remove the fence or put that down to the level, the height level?
Depends on what is granted tonight.
But...
Without a variance, he can only do six.
Without a variance, it would have to come down to a complying height.
Three, I'm sorry, three.
So we would be, so the variance is for that and not to allow the pool, we would not allow the pool?
The variance is twofold. The variance is for the allowable, or increasing the allowable height of the fence as well as locating a pool in the corner side yard.
So if it's twofold, it could be to reduce the height of the fence and allow the pool in the side yard?
So you're...
Yes.
Yeah, but don't we have a requirement around a pool? You have to have...
You do have to have a fence around a pool with it being an above-ground pool. There are some, depending upon the height of the side walls of the pool, there are some abilities, but with a built-in deck that is accessible with steps and stairs, you'd have to have some kind of a means of controlling access to the, the pool area. Typically, that's a...
So the petition is for two things?
I think it's a four-foot tall.
But the petition is for two things. Trustee Ross?
I think I tend to agree with trustee Hood that we should go with the finding of the zoning and planning commission because they put a lot of time into that. And I think if you have rules for some, you have to have the same rules for all, as hard as this one is.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Wilson?
If the pool was missing for 10 years, is that correct?
Yeah.
When did you build the deck?
The deck was also built at the time the pool was in, stairs and everything was, was done. And the only thing I replaced five years ago is a couple of four-by-fours. They were, I did like the way they were deteriorating, and I just replaced them. But as far as the wood and everything on there is, is good. Maybe a couple of boards that need to be replaced.
Now, this is a 2000 aerial photo, and you can see that the deck is built around the circumference of the pool, about a quarter of the circumference of the pool.
I believe Mary asked earlier, oh, can I ask him a question?
Go ahead.
I believe Mary asked earlier, but I didn't hear your response, sorry. When did you purchase the home?
I'd say 27 years ago, approximately.
Did he say seven?
Twenty-seven.
So the deck permit you pulled then?
Pardon?
So then you pulled these, so then these permits, if it was 27 years ago, these were pulled, permits were pulled by Mr. Saltero?
27 years ago would have been around 1989, 1990, so...
Which is when these permits were pulled.
Right.
So you put in a deck?
No.
Well, 1989...
The deck that I built was on the other side.
Ah, okay, because there is a permit for a deck issued in 1989, okay.
Yeah, it looks like the 1983 permit was around the, the pool.
Ma'am, if you want to speak, state your name for the record.
I just want to say something. My name is Maria Saltero, I'm Mario's wife. The reason and practically this been doing all this thing, because before we didn't have that kind of money to start remodeling all the, the things there. The other thing that I really, I'm begging you, that you let him to build the, the pool is because the, you know how much they cost, how much it costs you to go to a swimming place for every month, every day? Because he hurt his back and when he was working. So he needs to have, like, continue to have this swimming thing to keep and shave the back. So the thing is, it's very expensive. It's around $1,000 a year for, to submit, be a part of the, to have the...
Center.
Yeah, to be able to swim in. So we...
It's 1,200 now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 1,200, well, it doesn't matter, but we don't, if you're gonna say, well, we're gonna, he can go and swim in this, in the area of the house three, four times a day, and he can be very better, in better shape. And, and I, I just think, you know, I put in your heart because really, we, we are part of the community. We are, we are the same, in the same boat. You said the, the pool didn't build in the time that you're supposed to. Across the street from the area is another, the same size and the same thing. But praise God, they never had to, any storm to destroy it. But it's still there, you know, with our neighbors. So I just, I want to let you on your heart, you know, the, sometimes we need support, like everybody else. And for that, I just let you on your heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Saltero. Mr. Saltero's correct, right across the street is the same situation, it's grandfathered, the pool is still standing. Now, if their pool were to be destroyed, or they take it down and they wanted to replace it, our ordinances would prohibit it and they would have to go through the same variance process with the zoning board and ultimately the board, whether, you know... Trustee Wilson?
So really, this goes back to 1983, that there's been a deck in a half-circle that's been on the side of the property? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I will remind you that a variance is a permanent deed, restriction or deed application. So whenever this new pool does get destroyed, they would be able to rebuild it without coming before you again. So it is a permanent fixture from this point forward if the, the variance is granted.
So that stands between grandfathering something and a, and a variance. The grandfathering is until it's destroyed, they can leave it. And then, once it's destroyed, you can't replace it unless you get a variance and that becomes permanent. So forever and ever on that property, you would always be able, be allowed to put a pool in the side yard.
Is that the same?
Which is part of the rea, you know, was part of the reason with the planning and zoning commission. Trustee Thorntonson?
Is that the same with the variance to the fence?
Yes.
That it's, it's a variance that's given to the deed?
It runs with the land.
I, excuse me, I also have, you know, when, when my kid plays soccer, sometimes he brings his, his team over and we've been using the back of the yard where there's no obstacles and stuff like that. I do have a garden back there, but it's right behind the garage. So we do use that, if the pool, if I was ever to put a pool in the back, you know, that would be an obstacle in the way. Because right now, you can't put it right behind because of the septic. So you need to move it like maybe right in the middle of the field or the backyard to put that, which I don't think I'm going to, to do that, you know. If this is not allowed right now, you know, because of, I love kids, I like to coach them, you know. Sometimes I'll be assistant, sometimes they ask me to coach. So I, I like to play with them in the backyard. I mean, if I was better, I mean, I, my back was better, I think I'd play more with them, but no. And, and they do have, there is a nice big, nice yard back there that they do play in the back. I think for the future, the kids are gonna rule, you know.
Okay, another question, or do you want to make a motion?
I just had one more question.
All right, trustee Wilson?
As of today, is it still somewhat beveled as far as the, the fence goes on the front and the side of the yard?
Wait.
Along the top of it?
The photos that are in your packet are, I believe, as it sits today. I'm not sure what you mean by beveled.
If you go into the third page of the petitioner's application here, if you look in the corner, up by the raised ranch, you'll see the, see how it's beveled and it...
Yeah, it looks like the fence across the front is a little bit higher than the fence that runs down the side yard.
Is there anything we can do with that to be more consistent and look?
And that's what he was explaining earlier, you know, we would allow, you know, in a rear yard, we allow a six-foot fence. We do allow some variances in height, you know, usually around six inches. He decided to carry the top of the fence level, and by the time it got out to the right-of-way line, it measures around seven and a half feet. So even at that, it's significantly higher than what we would even allow in the rear yard. So the, the variance application as it is now, I believe, allows up to a six-foot fence. So there would need to be some alterations to that fence to bring it into even the, the way the variance is slated at this point.
That was my... All the way across, because it starts off at the house at six, right? So if it, if it came down following the dirt and left it at six, my concern was at the turn...
It would still require a variance because we would only allow a four-foot fence in that area. The way the ordinance is written right now, it's basically allowing you up to a six-foot.
Well, where's, where's, where's the privacy? I mean, where's the, where's the justice there? There's been a lot of vandalism here around this area. And I also, you know, built that fence for that purpose. And the vandalism, you know, once the officers get there, it's like too late. I mean, if I put a picket fence right through there, somebody that goes in my house or something like that is gonna have a freeway, I mean, hopefully it never happens, but, you know, sometimes, I, I mean...
We have, we have to balance, you know, the, your need for privacy with, you know, the openness of the community, the free flow of light and air through the community, which you are allowed privacy, but it needs to be in your rear yard. It needs to be back off away from the, the street right-of-ways. We do allow a six-foot fence for a privacy fence in the rear yard, but it has to be out of the corner side yard and it has to be out of the front yards. So it would, they would allow, be allowed to have a six-foot privacy fence in their rear yard, but it just can't be up along the edge, or up along the edge of the right-of-way.
Okay, I'm gonna, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to?
Motion to. Do you want to do them together or separate?
No, well, actually, we have one ordinance proposed, and as is always the case, we write the ordinance to be consistent with the petitioner's request.
Right.
So this is an affirmative ordinance, understanding what the petitioner would like. So the motion would be to grant the variance. And then, once that motion is made, if you want to grant the variance, you vote yes. If you do not feel that the case has been made for the variance, you would vote no.
Right. So the motion would be to approve Mr. Soltero's petition for a variance to allow the installation of a pool in a solid, closed wood fence that exceeds three feet in height in a corner side yard setback.
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Ballas. Roll call, please, Donna.
Wilson?
No.
Ross?
Nay.
Thorstensen?
No.
Ballas?
Nay.
Hood?
No.
All nays.
All right, it's failed, the same way it did at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm very sorry, but you're gonna have to meet the requirements of our existing ordinances, okay? And staff will work with you and let you know how you can do that. Okay? I'm very sorry.
Is there anybody that disagrees with this?
It was unanimously negative. It was zero to five against granting a permanent variance for the fence height and for the pool in the side yard.
Oh, because I didn't hear this side at all.
Donna, read back the roll call, please.
Wilson was nay, Ross was a nay, Thorstensen was nay, Ballas was nay, and Hood was nay. So that's all the trustees.
Okay.
All right. I'm sorry, Mrs. Soltero, Mrs. Soltero. All right, item number three, approval of ordinance two thousand sixteen.
Fifty-three.
Oh, okay, fifty-three. Authorizing the execution of a professional service agreement between the Village of Gurnee and Housiel Levine, Levine Associates LLC.
Sure. So, as you know, we got the zoning ordinance updated sometime ago here, and the next document that needs to be updated is a comprehensive land use plan. So submitted an RFP, or RFQ, excuse me, received five responses to that. Had a group put together that narrowed the field down and brought firms in for interviews. After the interviews, it was recommended that we move forward with Housiel Levine and Associates. The original price that was quoted exceeded our budget. They came in about one hundred and forty thousand dollars, which didn't include two sub-area plans that they proposed in there that were fifteen thousand each. David and his team went back and went through the proposal, scaled it back a little bit, and negotiated with Housiel Levine. Were able to get that price down to one hundred eleven thousand, seven fifty-seven, and that included the two sub-area plans as well. So they were able to shave about fifty thousand dollars off the original quote. We've worked with them in the past. It's a solid firm. We've seen the quality of their work and we've been impressed by what we see. We only had fifty thousand dollars in this year's budget, so that combined with the fact that the community development department is, is down an associate planner and summers are busy time, we're proposing to start this a little later in the fiscal year and carry it into next fiscal year so that we can budget the remaining funds and, and get this knocked out. Talked to Housiel Levine and they were fine with that approach and that timeline. So it's now before you for consideration.
Questions from the trustees?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ballas, second by trustee Hood. Roll call, please, Donna.
Wilson?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ballas?
Aye.
Hood?
Yes.
All ayes, one absent.
All right, motion carries. Item number four, approval of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash fifty-four, authorizing execution of grand lease agreement with Vogue Towers LLC for a portion of the property located at forty-five, forty-eight Old Grand Avenue, finally.
Yeah, this is something David and his team's been working on, seems like for a couple of years now. The, the plan is to remove the water tower at Fire Station One. It does little for our water system and it's in need of repairs that are, cost more than the towers actually worth and the benefit it provides us. Problem with doing that is there's a couple cell carriers on there, and per the lease agreement we have with them, we, if we remove the tower, we need to give them a place to relocate to. So we've been working with some companies to try to get together an agreement to construct a monopole, get those carriers moved over, and then that'll allow us to take down Fire Station, or take down the, the water tower at Fire Station Number One. So David worked with Vogue Towers, got a, a deal together that we think is beneficial to both sides. He highlighted in his, his memo here, basically Vogue would construct a new monopole, transition over the two current carriers on the water tower, give us an upfront lump sum payment of thirty thousand dollars in exchange for fifty-seven point five percent of the revenue from the current leases, which those leases are around thirty-three thousand dollars apiece. And then fifty percent, they would keep fifty percent of revenue from any additional leases they are able to secure on that monopole. So carriers number three and four, they'd keep fifty percent and then split the other, give us the other fifty percent. Vogue is much more capable than we are to advertise this water tower out there, or this monopole out there, that there's spots available on it. So if they're able to secure a third and fourth carrier on there, we're almost back to one hundred percent as far as where we are revenue-wise, and we get rid of the liability of the water tower at Station Number One. So we, as I said, we think it's a decent deal. It's something we've been working on for a while and we think we may have it here. So we'll mention that we still need to bring forward a special use permit to the village board, so that'll be something forthcoming. And there is language in the agreement that if that special use permit isn't approved by the village board, then the, the lease is null and void. So there'll be a second step to this that we'll be bringing at a future village board meeting.
I didn't mean finally like you dragged your heels. This was extremely complicated.
This is a tough, this is a tough one.
And this is a good solution to outsource the management of the new monopole. If this, if this special use permit wasn't to pass for this, and we've already taken down the water tower, what would happen to the two carriers?
We, we don't take down the water tower until the monopole is erected.
All right, so we gotta wait.
They need a seamless transition from the water tower over to the monopole.
Yeah, I think there's, the language in here is there's, there's five years from the commencement of the lease to get the monopole up and the, the carriers transitioned over, so this isn't gonna be an overnight.
So the water tower won't be out by gurney days?
It's still gonna be around for a while.
No, not quite.
Oh, okay.
Taking down the water.
All right, question, trustee Ross?
Will it be located behind the fire station?
It'll be in front of the equipment shelters.
The equipment shelter is going to remain in place. The water tower's on the north side of the equipment shelter. The new monopole is gonna be tucked right against the south side of the equipment shelter.
South side.
So it'll be between.
Closer to Grand.
It'll be between Old Grand and the equipment shelter.
Much less visual impact versus a water tower.
Trustee Thorntonson.
I didn't, I missed it. If it was in here, is the height of the replacement monopole the same as the existing?
It's comparable. I think the monopole may be a few feet taller as proposed in order to get four carriers and all the separations that you need between all the different carriers. So we wanted to make sure that there is capacity for four carriers on that monopole. So I think it's, I think the, the water tower is a hundred and fifty-seven feet to the top-ish, and then the, the carrier antennas stick up above that, and I think the monopole that we had proposed at one seventy-five.
You won't be able to tell standing on the ground that it's taller.
Motion to approve.
Questions on this side?
I was asking the same question as.
Okay, so I have a motion by trustee Wilson?
Second.
Second by trustee Ballas. Roll call, please.
Wilson?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ballas?
Aye.
Hood?
Yes.
Five ayes, one absent.
All right, motion carries. Item number five, approval of ordinance two thousand sixteen fifty-five, waiving the competitive bidding requirements and awarding a contract to Data Pros LLC for utility bill printing and mailing services with the Village of Gurnee.
Yeah, so everyone in town receives a utility bill. You may have noticed over the past year or so, a couple of them have shown up and looked kind of funky. The company that we currently are with have had some significant staff turnover, which has impacted the quality of the service they provided us. So nobody likes receiving a bill in the first place, but when it shows up and is all fuzzy and goofy looking, they really don't like it. So Brian and his staff reached out to three different businesses that print utility bills for surrounding communities, solicited proposals from them. Data Pros came in as the low bidder, about sixteen hundred dollars less than what we're currently paying. So there's not a huge price savings, but talking to those surrounding communities and Brian has experience as he used Data Pros in a, in a previous life, the quality is there, and that's what we're concerned about. So staff is recommending to work with Data Pros. There shouldn't be any issues on the I O side as far as getting the data files to them. They can use the data in the current configuration that we'd be able to provide it to, so that always helps out as well. So the request is to move forward to Data Pros at a price of thirty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars is the base price on that.
And that's the same that we paid in the past?
Yeah, we're currently paying thirty-seven, seven.
Motion to approve.
Any questions from trustees?
I have one more question.
All right, trustee Thorntonson.
Last one for the night, I promise. The term of the agreement is three years? Do I say this right, Brian? Okay, thanks.
All right, motion, trust, motion by trustee Wilson to approve?
Second.
Second by trustee Thorntonson. Roll call, please, Donna.
Wilson?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ballas?
Aye.
Hood?
Yes.
Five ayes, one absent.
All right, motion carries. Item number six, approval of request from Public Works Department to purchase a Moorebork MR-18 chipper from Alexander Equipment Company at a cost of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. This was through the National Joint Powers Alliance Price Match.
Yeah, so the Public Works chipper that's been getting used over time here lately with EAB and everything else going on, it's fourteen years old, and we've had a couple of recent developments with it. The first being that they've discovered metal shavings in the oil filter, which is not good for those of you that know anything about engines. And then, secondly, the, the chipper's on schedule to be replaced next year, but next year, some EAP requirements kick in. That'll bump the same model chipper by twelve thousand dollars with being that they gotta go to a different Tier Four cleaner diesel engine. So with those two developments, Public Works started taking a look at their options. They reached out to, or they actually went through the National Joint Powers Alliance, which is a government purchasing co-op that we belong to, and found an equivalent machine at eighty-two thousand, seven twenty-three. We took that price and reached out to some different equipment companies we work with, Alexander being one of them, to see if they could match it. They could. Alexander also took a look at our current chipper and gave us a trade-in price of fifteen thousand dollars, which, based on what they're finding in the oil filter, we should probably trade it in quickly before something happens catastrophic. So that brings the, the total cost down to sixty-seven thousand, seven twenty-three, sixty-five. As I said, it was in the CIP for replacement next year, so doing a little ahead of schedule, but based on what they're seeing in the oil and these EAP requirements, or EPA, I'm sorry, EAP, EPA, requirements coming down, they're recommending that we replace it now. We've had some savings on other projects. I'm in the capital fund, so we're confident we'll be able to cover it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have, I have a motion, trustee Wilson, a second from trustee Ross. Discussion? Questions? All right, roll call, please, Donna.
Wilson?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ballas?
Aye.
Hood?
Yes.
Five ayes, one absent.
All right, motion carries. Strategic move by Public Works. Item number seven, approval of request from Public Works Department to waive competitive bidding requirements and purchase a Whacker WL-32 articulating wheel loader from Burris Equipment at a cost of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah. So remember, right before we approved the final budget, we made a couple tweaks to it. One of them was to put in a piece of equipment to help clear sidewalks in the winter. While that's what it'll be used for, there's other uses that Public Works will use this piece of equipment for throughout the year. But this is that machine. They brought one in last year to demo it. It worked out good. It's a narrow machine, so the issue with the, the four-foot wide sidewalks is able to maneuver on those sidewalks, is also able to get around the corners and then the, the bridges that we have between Oak Plain over to First Street on one thirty-two, which is a, a section of sidewalk that we constantly receive complaints about as far as getting that plowed. So between present complaints in the past and the winter time getting the sidewalks plowed, as much as we heard in the strategic plan about pedestrian mobility, and then the most recent pedestrian survey, a lot of the concerns in there were clearing sidewalks in the wintertime. Like I said, this is a piece of machinery that Public Works tried out that worked good, and will also be able to be used in other Public Works operations as well throughout the year. This is another one of those where it's territorial sales. So Burris is, is a, is a local vendor. So with the territorial sales, you're not, you're not able to bid the equipment out. It's the same thing we run into with the, the hook-up trucks, trucks and that equipment. So we had seventy thousand dollars in the budget. Obviously, Public Works got a, a price on Burris before the final budget was put together to ensure the, we had enough money in there. So this is included in the budget and is now before you for consideration.
Trustee Ross?
We got pictures of all these scenes. Do all these attachments come with it?
No, that's, that's just the options available. Other pieces of attachments that you can see how versatile this piece of equipment could be, from the brooms to the mowers to the, everything else that comes on there, so.
So that, that'll be another time, coming back and asking.
If Public Works determines that there's attachments needed, then it'll have to be something that's budgeted for, so.
Thank you.
And we still won't get to sidewalks immediately, even with the new equipment, but District Fifty-Six has assured me that all of their students can take the bus. No one should be walking. And the high school is putting together a program or in the process of, on days where there is snow, that kids would be able to be transported instead of walking on Grant. So we haven't, you know, we're pursuing both options because doing sidewalks is not the immediate concern the first twenty-four hours of a snowfall, so.
No, but I'd just say that I've challenged Tom that if we're spending seventy thousand dollars on a piece of equipment that is gonna be used for sidewalks, that we're gonna have to be looking at expanding the sidewalks that we plow and how quick we get out there. So I'll just throw that out there.
Working on both. But I don't want the expectation set from the minutes of this meeting that the sidewalks will always be done that morning before we've even plowed our roads, so.
I've met with the superintendent from the high school a couple of times. They're gonna look at trying to set up maybe some hubs.
Yeah.
Over on the other side of the, the railroad bridge and in some other neighborhoods that they can swing back through and have these hubs set up that the kids can walk to the hubs instead of trying to walk on Grand Avenue or Oak Plain. So there's, there's something they're still working on, though. It hasn't been finalized.
So we're attacking it from two different places. So questions on this piece of equipment, or do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Ballas, second by trustee Ross. Roll call, please, Donna.
Wilson?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ballas?
Aye.
Hood?
Yes.
Five ayes, one absent.
All right, item number eight, approval of resolution, motion carries. Item eight, approval of resolution two thousand sixteen seven, establishing certain property of the Village of Gurnee to be surplus. This would be Police Department units one four-three, one four-five, one seventy, and one- This would be Police Department units 143, 145, 170, and 176, and Public Works units 291 and 654.
Yeah. The, the Police Department units are, squads are gonna be replaced, and then one of our CSO vehicles that just got rear-ended here two weeks ago and is being totaled out by an insurance company, the check showed up today, so that's no longer of any use to us. Um, the Public Works units are the chipper that we just approved replacement for, and then the Vector, which was, uh, approved by the village board, um, a couple months ago.
It's very routine. Any questions?
Some moved.
Motion by trustee Ballas?[1718.51]